Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have a few. Item 2.8 and 2.9 will be postponed until the next council meeting. And item 9.2 will also be postponed because there's a lack of a quorum for that item.
Okay, so can we get a council approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Singleton?
I also would aye. Okay, next we have the awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamations. Number one, the City of Colinga Marketing Video Presentation.
Thank you. So in just a moment on the screens, you'll see a video that we contracted with a local videographer to make, to market the city. So this will appear on the city website as well as when we go to ICSC recon and we try to bring retail establishments to Colinga. This is one of the videos that we will be using.
Hello, my name is Ron Ramsey. I am the mayor of the city of Colinga. I would like to welcome each of you as we tell you about our city, Colinga, California, the boom town that not only lived, but continues to thrive.
Nestled in the Pleasant Valley at the eastern edge of California's coastal mountain range, surrounded by hills and ranches, Colinga is 10 miles west of Interstate 5 and 60 miles southwest of the city of Fresno, California's fifth largest city. Located near the southern western tip of Fresno County, Colinga is well situated with Monterey County to the west and Kings County to the east. The spectacular view of the valley and surrounding hills is preserved with deliberate planning. You won't find a high-rise obstructing the natural beauty. Downtown Colinga is quaint and filled with personality. It serves as the commercial, civic, cultural, and recreational hub. Local parks, green belts, trails, and scenic vistas provide a natural complement to development in the area. Colinga is accessible to and from major cities within the state with highways 198 and 33 intersecting the city. Colinga is also the halfway point between Los Angeles and San Francisco, and Los Angeles and Sacramento, and the largest city in the western Fresno County. Colinga serves as a retail hub for the area. Not only is Colinga known as the sunny side of the valley, we proudly proclaim to be the most business-friendly city in the state of California. The city of Colinga is committed to partnering with new business prospects to offer development and new business incentives that are mutually beneficial to both parties. As a full-service city that provides a wide range of services to approximately 18,000 citizens, Colinga has an excellent school system, hospitals, parks, and recreational districts, a two-year community college, police department, fire department, municipal airport, chamber of commerce, prison, state hospital, museum, regional sports complex, library, and much more. With a median household income of over $50,000, Colinga also boasts a population of over 20,000 residents within a five-mile radius and nearly 50,000 within a 25-mile radius. Our affordability and low crime rates make Colinga an ideal place to call home. Housing continues to be vibrant with future planned neighborhoods on the horizon. The city of Colinga also serves as the sole natural gas provider for residential and commercial customers within city limits, which means that we are able to keep costs down, often much lower than public utility providers. Our largest employers include the California Department of State Hospitals, Pleasant Valley State Prison, Avonel State Prison, West Hills Community College District, Colinga Huron Unified School District, Harris Ranch, and the Colinga Hospital. Our daily traffic count for Elm Street, our main thoroughfare, is roughly 11,000 cars. The Colinga Area Chamber of Commerce serves as a welcome center for visitors and locals looking for services, activities, history, and resources available within our community. As a nonprofit organization, the Colinga Area Chamber of Commerce promotes shopping local and advocates, advertises, and supports chamber member businesses throughout the city and nearby areas. Known for being the first police department in the state of California to hire a female police chief, Kay Holloway, in 1975, the Colinga Police Department is a 24-hour, full-service law enforcement agency serving and protecting the residents of the city of Colinga. The Colinga Fire Department not only provides fire prevention and suppression services, but also emergency medical services which expand beyond Colinga city limits, totaling about 1,200 square miles of the west side of Fresno County. Our community members are strong supporters of public safety in our community. Colinga Hospital offers 24/7 emergency services, acute care, and skilled nursing. Laboratory, ultrasound, and radiology services are also available. The city of Colinga is committed to enhancing the quality of life for our citizens by supporting the need for aviation travel to promote commerce, business, and recreational activities and special events. The Colinga Municipal Airport is open for public use at all hours of the day for aviation-related activities. The RC Baker Museum is loaded with tons of local and regional history, including but not limited to rocks and minerals, fossils, photographs, equipment, and artifacts related to coal mining, oilfield exploration, production and transportation, cattle ranching, and much more. You could spend days going through the museum and still find new treasures to cause wonder. The Colinga Huron Recreation and Parks District encompasses over 860 miles and was formed in 1972 to serve both the communities of Colinga and Huron. The district is responsible for maintenance and operation related to special events, activities, sports, and recreational programs for youth and adults to take place in four parts totaling 50 acres, two community centers, one fitness lab, two pools, and a landscaping and lighting maintenance district. They also operate Camp Jaeger, a camp accommodating about 125 people located in Cambria, California. The Colinga Regional Sports Complex houses one Little League baseball field, one softball field, a skate park, a dog park, and an amphitheater. The Colinga Huron Unified School District is made up of two communities, the cities of Colinga and Huron. Committed to advancing their mission to provide the best education and career opportunities to all students, the district serves nearly 5,000 students and credits their success to the collaborative efforts of the school personnel, site, and district administration, parents, students, and community members. Since 1994, Faith Christian Academy, a WASC and ACSI-accredited non-denominational kindergarten through 12th grade school, has been providing modern curriculum, dedicated staff, comfortable facilities, and a safe wholesome atmosphere. West Hills College Colinga is committed to the relentless pursuit of student success. Offering associate's degrees, transfer degrees, career and technical certificate programs, they are committed to inspiring all learners by providing dynamic, high-quality academic programs and services, including those offered through distance education. As one of the few California community colleges which provides students with the option of on-campus housing, West Hills Community College is committed to providing students with a safe, secure living environment which in turn encourages academic success. Many studies show that students who live on campus not only have a higher GPA, but are more likely to graduate, all while living in a caring environment which helps promote a better understanding of different cultures and lifestyles while teaching students about responsibility. And if you have ever considered studying abroad, West Hills College Colinga is also one of the few California community colleges to offer an international students program, helping to make Colinga a diverse place to live and do business. The West Hills College Rodeo Arena is known nationwide for filling national and regional championship teams and producing stars that have gone on to become professional rodeo contestants, national finalists, and world champions. The Farm of the Future sits on two parcels totaling 213 acres. It is a national model of agricultural education specializing in integrated food, fiber, and environmental systems for production to consumption, emphasizing sustainable agriculture in partnership with resource in the San Joaquin Valley and the world. One of Colinga's longest traditions is the annual Hornet Derby, which is held every Memorial Day weekend and includes a carnival, food, vendors, beer garden, live concerts, parade, fireman's pancake breakfast, and water fights, a softball tournament, hornet races, and many more fun family festivities. Our Let Freedom Ring Celebration is Colinga's annual celebration of nationhood commemorating the passage of the Declaration of Independence on July 4. This event typically held the Saturday before the 4th of July includes a professional fireworks show, car show, food, vendors, music, entertainment, beer garden, cornhole tournament, and much more. Colinga also participates in National Night Out, which enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. During this event, hundreds of community members gather in the downtown area for an evening full of festivities, and we ensure Colinga students are equipped to begin the new school year by handing out free school supplies. We are rich in tradition, history, and community. We shop local and support our businesses. We are Colinga, home of the orange and black and the hornet. We have pride and we have heart. We offer you a strong sense of community with a small-town feel and big-town dreams.
Hi, my name's Marissa Trejo, City Manager for the city of Colinga. I want to thank each of you for taking a few moments to learn about our city, the most business-friendly city in the state of California. I would love an opportunity to show each of you around.
Before we move on to the next item, I just want to say I misspoke earlier, so we're only pulling 2.8. On the presentations, 2.9 will remain.
Okay, back on track here. Item number two here, we got the Harris Ranch K-9 fundraiser check presentation to Colinga Police Fire K-9 Foundation and the Colinga Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Council. On October 9th, the Harris Ranch put on a car show and a silent auction. And Suzanne Deveraux from Harris Ranch is here to present a check.
Well, thank you for letting me be here tonight just for a moment. But we want to, on behalf of Mr. Harris and the amazing team of people over at Harris Ranch and in Restaurant, we want to say thank you. Thank you to your amazing police officers and this incredible foundation. Thank you for keeping your community safe, and we just are excited about partnering with you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to make an announcement. I received a phone call from the Pleasant Valley State Prison Warden tonight, and they will also be presenting a check to me tomorrow for their food drive that they do out there for $2,500 for the K-9 program as well. Thank you.
All right, item number three would be the West Hills College's Class of 2021 Athletic Hall of Fame Inductees. Where we at? No? Oh. Okay, since they're not able to be here with us, we'll read the names. 2003 West Hills Football Team Pacific Graffiti Bowl Champions. You have Matt Albanese, Justin Burna, Kiwanah Byrd, Carl Castile, Tiffany, let's go with, Contrera, Carl Dean, Jonathan Duncan, Elijah Evans, Jerry Gare, Mark Gritten, Aaron Henson, Brett Howard, Daniel Jenkins, Jeremy Jones, Victor Lockett, Justin Martin, Alexander Nafu, Noah Palmer, Noah Palmerton, we're gonna go with that. Chip Rivera, Nathan Russell, Steve Smith, Brady Treadway, Bill Walls, Richard Womack, and you have Jerome Ard, Tracy Buchanan, Lamar Callaway, Richie Castro, Jesse Carter, Alfonso Delgado, Cody East, Nate Green, you got Larry Harry, Chris Hicks, Jafia Jean, Sherman Jenkins, Latresh Jones, Josh Jones, Joey Malina, Ed Oscar, Tom Roberts, Steve Salazar, Fred Strickland, Carlos Vill Senor, Chad DeWard, Nathan Arsenal, Pete Bustamante, Miguel Cardenas, Brett Cavazos, Jerry Curry, Steve Dixon, Katie Epilate, Xavier Flores, Dr. Paul Griffin, okay, I guess he played, Eric Henderson, Mike Hovert, Wes Jefferson, Aaron Joshua, Marvin Kendricks, John Lewis, Eric Moran, Kenny Patterson, Ian Pleasant, Armando Rodriguez, Mike Seamus, Mike Taylor, Darius Vannett, and James Watson. Thank you to the West Hills 2003 team for being the duck. Okay, I hear you, Cujo, I hear you. Certificate of Recognition from the Colinga Elk's sponsorship of the in-person drug awareness prevention program. We're gonna read this. Certificate of Recognition in recognition of the lodge's sponsorship of the in-person drug awareness prevention program for students of the Colinga Huron Unified School District in combination with National Red Ribbon Week from October 23rd to the 31st, 2021, presented to the Elk's Lodge Number 1613. Mayor Ron Ramsey. Introduction of the Code Enforcement Officer Julio Chavez.
Thank you. Julio, if you can come up here to the dais. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Julio to the community. I know Councilmember Horn had asked that he attend a council meeting and so everybody could put a face to a name. This is Julio.
Thank you, Council. I look forward to cleaning up this city a little more. That video that we just saw was amazing, and I'm very honored to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six, Police Department's introduction of the new police technicians, Daniel Salseda, Anna Vasquez, Charlene Villa, and Marissa Simon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Over the last few months with COVID, we were unable to introduce our new hires, and I would like to take this opportunity to read a little bit about them and introduce them to the council. Daniel Salseda was hired by the Colinga Police Department four months ago as a part-time police technician and has since moved up to a full-time position. Born in Hanford and raised in Colinga, Daniel has been a part of the Colinga community most of his life. As a child, Daniel stayed busy participating in Little League Baseball and played on the school basketball team throughout middle school and high school. Daniel's family relocated to Hanford in his freshman year of high school where he continued to play basketball and graduated from Sierra Pacific High School. Where he can, Daniel loves, Daniel's love for law enforcement started out as a young, at a young age, as he watched his dad go through the police academy and later become a police officer with Colinga PD. As soon as Daniel was old enough, he joined the PD, the Police Department's Junior Explorer Program where he was able to work alongside his dad and see some of the real PD action. Daniel's future career plans is to attend the police academy and become a police officer himself. He's accompanied tonight by his seven-month-old baby boy, Zaire?
Ezra.
Ezra, I'm sorry, and his girlfriend Jessica and his parents. Daniel Salseda.
First off, I just want to appreciate, thank everybody for coming. Working with the city, I've just been here a few months now. I've already learned a lot, met a lot of great people. I look forward to continue doing that. And just thank everybody for the opportunity, and you, Chief, yourself, for the opportunity. Thank you.
Charlene Villa?
I didn't get anything, so I don't have anything to say, but.
I'll let you speak. Charlene is one of our new police technicians who is currently working in dispatch.
My name is Charlene. I'm from Fresno, California, and I am happy that I got an opportunity to be here. Your guys' community looks like a very tight-knit community, and I want to help out in any way that I possibly can. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you.
Anna Vasquez? Anna Vasquez has the hardest job in the police department. She is our new evidence technician. She has over 17,000 pieces of property to go through and make sure that our audit was accurate and get rid of a bunch of property that she and the commander are currently working on. She's new to town. She just moved from Los Angeles. She is looking forward to learning all there is, becoming an evidence technician and is happy to be part of such a great team and the community. Anna Vasquez, wants anything? No? She's not this shy in the department. Marissa Simon? Marissa Simon just started at the PD at the end of September as a part-time police technician and a records clerk. She is from Colinga, previously worked, she previously worked at Starbucks and currently going to West Hills College studying business management. She appreciates the opportunity she was given to work at the police department and is excited to see what she can learn in her new position. Marissa Simon. That's our police technicians. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right.
And the next one again?
And the one after that.
And the next one after that.
Yes. Chief, you'll be swearing in of the police officer Damian Sparks.
Damian? Mayor Pro Tem and Council, it's my honor to introduce you Damian Sparks. Damian is from Fresno, is from the Fresno area and comes to the Colinga Police Department via Merced County Sheriff's Office with six years of law enforcement experience. While at Merced County SO, Damian was part of their department's K-9 team. The STAR team. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family and training police protection canines and handlers. He has five wonderful kids, ages 23 to 19 months old. canines and handlers. He has a, he has five wonderful kids, ages 23 to 19 months old, which makes him, his life even more interesting. He loves football and baseball and has a diehard, and is a diehard San Francisco Giants and Dallas Cowboy fan.
Okay.
Damian is looking forward to serving the citizens of Kalanga for a long time and hope to do, do so in a professional, positive, and pleasant manner. Damian, please raise your hand. I state your name.
Aye, Damian Sparks.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
The duties of which I'm about to enter.
The duties of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Between his badge is Sergeant Mark Satello from Fresno PD.
Hello. They gave it to me.
This is your real badge.
Oh, wow. Wow. Yeah, like, that shiny. All brand new. Too many muscles up here. Come on, man. You think I've never done this before? This shirt, okay. Thank you, buddy.
Uh, I'm shy, just like the police technicians. Thank you all.
All right, Chief, you got a letter of accommodation for the K-9 Officer Francisco.
Francisco Barra? That your partner, or you put him up? All right. Afraid he was gonna bite the Mayor Pro Tem or something?
Yeah, he was looking.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council, it's my honor as your police chief to award a letter of accommodation to K-9 Officer Francisco Barra. Francisco Barra has been employed with the City of Kalanga for the past four years, and upon completion of his field training program, he was assigned to the Patrol Division. In April 2019, Officer Barra was assigned K-9 Eli as his partner, and the two of them have been inseparable ever since. Officer Barra has been one of the highest-producing officers in the police department, responding to over 5,600 calls for service and conducted over 2,800 self-initiated investigations, written over 780 reports, made over 450 arrests, issued over 200 citations, and only written five field interview cards. Good job. Since being partnered with K-9 Eli, they have been, they have attended over 900 hours of training, made over 660 felony arrests, have recovered over 1,000 grams of methamphetamines, 15 grams of heroin, 28 grams of cocaine, and have recovered over 30 firearms. The two of them have also assisted in over 50 search warrants, leading to the recovery of narcotics weapons, and have been involved in 10 vehicle pursuits. K-9 Eli has been deployed over 400 times since they have been partnered with, together with 240 K-9 deployments just last year. During Officer Barra's time with the department, he was, he has established contacts within the city and have yielded narcotics, guns, and property. Officer Barra is highly motivated and a hard worker. When asked to cover a shift or come in at the last minute, he makes himself available. He is extremely loyal to this department and to this city. During my time here at the police department, I can honestly say Officer Barra is one of the best hires we've ever made. This example of his consistent, hard work show, and show of dedication to the community, to the safety of this town and this agency, and is to be commanded. Keep up the excellent work. Congratulations. You're welcome. Want to say anything?
Yeah.
He's not shy.
I just want to say thank you, guys. I seriously worked my ass off for this, for this city. I really, I really do, and I hope I can continue to work here and continue to produce the way I'm producing, so really thank you, guys, and I want to thank the Chief for allowing me to do everything I do. So. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, thank you. So, at this time, we'll take a 15-minute break so everybody can get their photos in, because after that, we got work to do here. So, enjoy your break.
Are we ready? Let's go, let's go. Go ahead and resume the, uh, meeting here. We'll resume when there's citizens comments. This section is of the agenda allows members to the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves and use a microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. The citizens comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. Do you have any citizens comments on anything within the agenda? Mr. Vosberg.
Mayor Protem and council, Nathan Vosberg, District Three. Uh, just had a couple items I wanted to go over with, I'll try and keep it, uh, quick. Item number four point one cannabis fees, um, love the video. Uh, best part about it was, uh, Kalinga being the best business friendly place. I'd like to keep it that way. Um, I would just like to say that raising cannabis fees is not going to attract new businesses in Kalinga. Uh, this will have the exact opposite effect. In fact, uh, years ago, when we agreed to use SCI, I remember I was up there and we also agreed that it would be on a limited time basis and that the fees were going to go down, down. This is on tape, Sean was there. Um, and that we were gonna not regulate this industry as much. I believe Mr. Atkinson was there at the same time as well. And so now here we are three to four years later and nothing has changed except for we're talking about raising fees, which is the exact opposite of what we should be doing, we should be lowering those fees. We want to attract more businesses and more jobs. So item number five point six, general fund transfer to impact funds, uh, for police and fire. I'm glad the city is finally paying, uh, these positions off and I hope we're never in the position to do this ever again. Loaning money from muni funds is not good practice, it's horrible practice and it can cause an avalanche effect because once you do it, it seems like you continue to do it. So please never do that again, glad you guys are paying that off. Um, item six point three, change to one watering day. I would watch out for doing this and the reason is is because every single time that we conserve, they ask us to conserve even more. So like everyone conserved and now they're being asked to conserve thirty percent more. So if you change it to one day, we'll be considering, we'll be conserving thirty percent of that one day, which means almost none the next time the drought comes and they decide to take us down. Um, number six point four, natural gas rates. While it is true that these increases may be needed for the stability of the system, I do question the need for the immediate action on this. Um, if I got a cell phone bill the next month and said, hey, it's gonna be forty-five percent more, I'm sure the entire world would jump out of their pants saying, what the heck, this is not right. Um, I think this should have been done in stages. The anodes have needed to be replaced for a long time. I think this, these fees should have been put in, in stages long ago, especially when we did have, uh, money to pay for this type of stuff, maybe we shouldn't have taken those decreases. Um, that being said, I know that, uh, Dan does a really good job at forecasting these and I would trust him on what he says because he's usually right. My question on this though is, is that the three hundred and thirty K for twenty twenty-three, uh, that we'd be deficit if we did nothing, does that include paying this loan back of three hundred and seventy-eight K? Uh, it doesn't. Because if not, then that would actually be even a worse situation of seven hundred and eight K in the negative if you do nothing. If you guys don't approve paying that loan back, so please approve paying the loan back. It's an important deal. And then lastly, um, the closed session item, I hope you guys pull this item for tonight, uh, because I don't think you even have a quorum to be able to talk about that. Uh, I'll save my comments on this item for a different day since I don't think you guys can be able to do anything with the amount of people you have going into this closed session and be only two people, so. Um, but I appreciate everything you guys do and thank you so much. I will not be able to stay for the meeting because I have a daughter that I have to watch at home and absolutely love doing that. While the wife goes to the gym. Uh, but I will be watching and that's the last thing I want to say is thank you so much for allowing, uh, the YouTube channel to exist because that is how people like me get to watch, so thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I see no more hands. Uh, public hearing, adopt resolution number four zero four three establishing new fees for cannabis operation and accepting the cannabis fee study report. Jasmine.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. So this is actually a continuation item from the October, uh, seventh council meeting and there was some information requested, um, at that meeting and staff has included that in the staff report. Um, and, uh, I can read that through, um, just for council or, um, would, would council prefer that I read it out? Okay, okay. And so, um, some, uh, one of the other pieces of information that was requested is that, um, the SCI provide additional, uh, cities as comparison and that's included in the last page of the, uh, fee study report.
So what were, what are our fees now compared to what they were? So I see, uh, eight, basically eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars across the board. What were they at previously?
Uh, council, I, I can answer that, I mean, the fees, the fees have not changed in terms of what they were prior to the, uh, at the last meeting, the fees haven't changed. Um, staff brought back the additional information that was requested related to the number of employees, um, or employee permits that have been issued since kind of the inception of this, as well as updating the report to include the, um, additional agencies that are more comparable or within the valley, um, per se in terms of comparison to their fees or their licensing fees particularly to the proposed licensing fees that the, uh, that's been proposed in this report. So the fee, the actual licensing fees have not been, have not changed because the licensing fees proposed at the previous meeting are in fact the cost of providing that service, um, which is in fact a substantial decrease from the, uh, the prior, uh, the existing fees that we currently have in place.
I guess that's my question, what are the existing fees that we have in place?
The existing fees?
Yes.
Uh, I think for a manufacturing license, we're almost around sixty thousand dollars for a manufacturing license and we'll be dropping that down to eighty-five seventy-six. I think on page, let's see what page is it? That talks about, um, we'll be going, we have eighty-five seventy-six for the annual commercial cannabis regulatory permit for all types. We've, we've had it, we've kind of limited it to all types rather than looking at every individual fee. We had different costs and amounts for each individual type of license. We're now, per license, it'll be eighty-five seventy-six. And as we talked about in the last meeting, that we want to continue through the end of this year, uh, with SCI in terms of the inspections, so they can finish out this calendar year as they've, they've actually been, uh, doing the inspections quarterly and now we're looking, that would be just the sixteen thousand one forty-two. As we talked at the last meeting, this will be the fee that's charged per license for the existing operators. And then in the twenty twenty-two calendar year, we would be charging the eighty-five seventy-six as we would then begin to transition to staff or a police officer doing the, but the quarterly inspections at the facilities. And I do, uh, I can try to get that information regarding our existing fees, but our fees did drop about a year ago, uh, a little bit for, I think, when we started talking about quarterly inspections rather than monthly inspections, that's really what kept the licensing fees relatively high. And so with going to quarterly, that did reduce the amount. So when they go to pay the licensing fees for twenty twenty-one, which have not been paid yet because they're deferred, they would be looking at the amount that's shown in the report. So it'll be that sixteen one forty-two per permit. Then for commercial, uh, indoor/outdoor cultivation, there's the additional to that twenty thousand square foot of canopy increment of the seventeen oh three. Um, and then starting in twenty twenty-two, it'll be three twenty-nine. So it'll be the eighty-five seventy-six plus three twenty-nine for every additional twenty thousand square feet of canopy, uh, for both indoor and outdoor. So it was the only differentiation, but basically every licensee will receive, will receive a, a bill for the eighty-five seventy-six per license they operate. But then there is also that discounted amount that's identified for each, um, additional license, the fifty percent off those adopted, those additional, uh, permits. So if you have three licenses, then basically you're getting, it says the cannabis businesses will be charged annual flat rate of eighty-five seventy-six permit, uh, per permit, each additional permit for this, for the same business at the same premise as defined in the code, adopted shall be charged fifty percent of the applicable fee.
Okay, that all sounds good. Um, my only issue is the employee permit at six hundred and six dollars. I understand it may cost us that much, but I still think it's way too high, especially for employees who aren't gonna go in there making a whole lot of money. Have to come up with six hundred and six dollars. At the very least, at the very least, I would like to see it drop dramatically, particularly if you're a resident of Kalinga, because we're gonna keep those ta, those dollars in Kalinga. And, um, I think we'd make that back in taxes and everything else that comes with it. So six hundred and six dollars in my opinion for a Kalinga resident to get a employee permit background and life scan is a little too much for me to vote for. I'd like to see that down to around the two hundred dollar range, something that may be a lot more doable. There's people who want to apply for the job, but they just can't come up with six hundred and six dollars to apply.
And I just wanted to update you, update the council because there was a request of the city attorney, uh, at the last meeting regarding the ability for the city to offer a cannabis fee subsidy. And that was confirmed that it, that the council does have the ability to issue that type of subsidy. It's just going to be up to the council to determine what that subsidy is going to be based on that, a current permit cost.
So I believe the number of employees from Kalinga was in the hundred and eighty range or something like that, is that what I saw?
Um, let me look at the report.
One twenty-nine.
It looks like a hundred and twenty-nine had Kalinga addresses, yes.
So it's not a terribly high number for the city to absorb. That's all I got to say on it.
You have any comments, Manny?
And this, this charge is not, they, they charge them before they get the job or after? Before?
Darren, do you mind providing some insight on that? Because I know at the last meeting, uh, we were unable to kind of confirm that. I know that you work a little bit closer with the, um, on the employee permits. Do you have any insight on that or any confirmation of how that process works with the employers?
Sean, uh, Darren had to run out right now.
Oh.
But generally, they have a job offer. Um, not always, like someone can walk in and apply to get their own employee permit and then start applying. But generally, they have a job offer from one of the cannabis companies and then they, um, apply to get the employee permit. And it's my understanding that some of the employers, I don't know if they still are, but at one point the employers were paying for the employee permit and others were not and the, uh, employees were having to pay for them themselves. So it's basically their background check to be able to finalize their hiring process.
Let, let's just say, uh, we did vote on this too low right now. For the people, they already paid the six hundred, would they be reimbursed something or?
No, it would be effective, um, moving forward. And so you can, um, approve it with a lowered amount for Kalinga residents. Um, I would ask for clarification if it's just a Kalinga address or if it's within Kalinga city limits, because we do have a lot of unincorporated area. Um, and so I would just ask that you make that designation if you make that motion.
All right.
I was just gonna say, and it is a public hearing, if you want to open it up for public comment.
Yes, any public comments? So where do you guys want to go with this one? Got a motion or you wanna?
Can you announce that the public hearing is closed?
Oh, public hearing is now closed.
So I guess, um, I'll make a motion to move forward with the new fees, with the exception of the employee permit background life scan. I'd like to see it drop down to two hundred for a Kalinga residence or anybody with a Kalinga address. And anybody outside can remain the same. Is that good enough?
I'll second that, I'll second that too, right? Yeah, I think that'll be a fair thing to do for our community.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Singleton?
I also would aye. All right, consent calendar. Okay, we have. We have seventeen items on the consent calendar. Is there any item that you like pulled? Uh, citizens, any items?
I just want to state, um, we need to pull five point four.
Yes.
You were emailed a PowerPoint presentation to review prior to the meeting. Uh, we are asking that that item be voted on separately. Uh, we can answer any questions if you have questions, but at a minimum, if it can at least get a separate vote outside of the consent calendar.
Okay, so, uh, you guys seen the PowerPoint on that one? So then you want to go ahead and do a vote on that one, item number four, which is adopt the resolution four zero five zero authorizing and directing executive, execution of a master equipment lease purchase agreement in connection with the financing of a fire aspiratus and directing certain actions with respect thereto.
So I'll make a motion to approve this.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Singleton?
Also would aye. Okay, so now we have sixteen items on the consent calendar. Would you like any of them pulled? None, perfect. Uh, do we get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Singleton?
Also vote aye. And now we go into the ordinance presentation, discussion and potential action items. Number one, discussion, direction and potential action regarding the electricity capacity downtown.
Thank you, so this item was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson. Um, I know that we initially, um, looked at this just to get a preliminary idea. I also know that Mr. Netherton is here and I don't know if he has anything he would like to add. Um, but I think that if council would direct staff to get a cost estimate to change the breaker to a thirty amp breaker, it would accomplish what everyone's trying to do, um, unless anyone wants to have further discussion on that.
Scott Netherton, Director, Kalinga Chamber of Commerce. Council, I just want to appreciate this coming forward. As you know, we had our Kalinga Fest last weekend and, uh, the real big hiccup we had was our power. We weren't able to, we hadn't, we're estimated count was about two thousand people come through that day. A lot of it was brought in because of the entertainment we were providing. We had a lot of power coming out and we kept, the last two performers kept tripping the breakers. And chief was, luckily he was willing, he ran and grabbed the police department, uh, generator and we were able to push through the last one, um, the last performers, we were late getting started. The city staff was tremendous out there trying to do everything they could to keep it up and going, but no matter how we distributed it, extension cords all up and down the plaza, we kept having the same issue. So we want that to be the hub, the heart of Kalinga and as many events as we can down there. I mean, it was a great turnout. Um, seemed like everybody really had a good time. The only, uh, dark cloud was the power issue. So if there's anything we can do to, uh, make sure that moving forward, we can continue to have events down there, I would, uh, request that you look into it, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, do we just have like a, uh, an estimate brought back to us like at the next meeting?
Yes, if that's the direction of the council.
And then we can vote on it then whether or not we want to move forward?
Correct.
Okay. We don't need to vote on that, do we?
No, everybody's nodding yes.
Item number two, uh, discussion and direction and potential action regarding the forgiving and refunding drought charges.
That's mine too. Uh, so, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. You know, I think that we should refund the money, especially now because it's close to Christmas time, there's a lot of people who are hurt by it. A lot of people, I won't say they didn't know about it, but a lot of people didn't know certain aspects of it. For instance, I'll give a, an example. Well, in fact, I'll use myself. So, uh, I got a six hundred and eleven dollar water bill. Um, at the time, I didn't know I had a pool leak and this also goes to someone else, but I don't want to name names. Costs five hundred dollars just to get the guy out to look at the pool. So that's eleven hundred dollars have already sunk into this and I don't even have the problem fixed. And I'm not gonna tell you how much it cost to fix the pool. Luckily, I was in a position to be able to do that, but what about the other people in Kalinga who were not in a position to be able to do that? We still paid the same amount for the water that they used. It's not like our water has gone up during that time, we just charged them more for using more water. So in my opinion, why, why punish them? And I'd like to see a refund given to them. And I'd like to see a refund given to them.
Um, I know that Sean is on the phone, and he has some just background information on why that was, um, recommended. But if council would like to hear from Sean or if you'd like to discuss it.
I'd like to hear from Sean, yes.
Alright, thanks, Mayor and Council. I'm just trying to kind of private some background and some timelines and kind of how we got to where we're at today. Um, as we know, twenty twenty-one's proven to be a year of extreme drought following two dry winters. Um, Lake Shasta, the primary source of water for USBR, which is the United States Bureau of Reclamation, who the city is contracted with, is presently at only twenty-two percent of its capacity. In the lowest it's been in over forty years. Um, earlier this summer, USBR required the city to demonstrate extraordinary water conservation pursuant to the USBR municipal and industrial water shortage policy in our contract to receive volumes above the public health and safety calculated amount. On July, on June third, uh, the city council declared a stage two high conservation alert. Um, and USBR indicated that stage two, which is watering two days per, two days, uh, per week, did not indicate extraordinary water conservation. Um, on June tenth, the city's water request was sent to USBR. Uh, the volume of water requested substantially above the defined public health and safety volume was roughly equal to the volume of water used in two thousand fifteen, the low point of this last drought. On August fifth, the city requested more water from USBR, which that had presently granted, uh, for a total of thirty-nine eighty-seven. On July first, the city council proclaimed drought emergency and approved the drought rates with the reduction goal to achieve two thousand fifteen water used. The drought charge was a numbers approach, allowing customers flexibility how they conserve water to meet specified requirement and did not require increased code enforcement activity due to the lack of code, due to the lack of a code enforcement officer at the time. Uh, the drought charge was based on the city's purchasing water at two thousand dollars per acre foot compared to the current USBR charge of a hundred and sixteen dollars per acre foot. The drought charge was for three billing cycles focused on July, August, and September. So it's basically over now. Um, the city's water customers were asked to conserve twenty percent for commercial customers and thirty percent for irrigation customers. The comparison was the same billing cycle as last year. So for single-family residential, the drought charge applied only to higher users. All water above thirty thousand gallons was subject to a drought charge. No drought charges were billed under fifteen dollars to alleviate administrative costs. And this means the first three thousand gallons of drought charge was not billed. So finally, pursuant to the city council resolution, drought charges for the first billing cycle were prorated fifty percent because the customers' letters were not received until halfway through that first billing cycle. So in terms of the current status on wholesale water, the city's overall water consumption for this year is closely following last year. Uh, the remaining water requirement is presently about five hundred acre foot to get to the end of the water year, which is on February, which ends on February twenty-eight. So staff is providing regular updates to USBR on the remaining need as we progress through these, these next four months. The language in the city's current USBR contract specifies that excess water taken is carried over to the next water year. And on October twelfth, the city received a letter from Ernest Connet, uh, Regional Director from USBR, again explaining the severity of this drought, uh, situation. The letter is directing contractors such as the city of Kalinga to review the USBR public health and safety policy and plan for potentially extremely limited water supply conditions in two thousand twenty-two. So in terms of the drought charge results, um, total drought charges over the three months round was, uh, round to, uh, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. To put this in perspective, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand is nineteen percent of the regular water charges billed over the three months. Or five percent of the total annual water revenue. By customer count, most charges were, went to single-family residential, but of course, the largest customer group is single-family residential. And then by dollar amount, single-family residential had forty-one percent of the total, an amount of about a hundred and thirteen thousand. Commercial came in second at about fifty-four thousand or nineteen percent. And you can see the others in the data table and the pie charts. So in terms of some considerations, um, as, as the item considers, uh, this item considers forgiving and refunding the drought charges, staff just wants to give the following considerations to the council. And one is that USBR has allowed water to the city above the public health and safety volume to some extent, based on the city's effort toward extreme water conservation. If the drought charges are refunded or credited back to the customers, this may create new challenges, and it's still unclear as to whether the city will need to purchase water to get through January and February. Based on comparison to last year, it appears the drought charge did not work. However, if the drought charges had been in place, we do not know how much more water would have been consumed this summer. Crediting back the drought charges may be perceived as unfair to customers that made an effort to conserve, especially the single-family group. For example, if someone let their lawn die to comply and the neighbor watered anyways, the one who let their lawn die did to basically no avail. The drought charge total revenue was two seven, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, if this revenue is not needed to purch, more, purchase more expensive water, it will be available in the Water Enterprise Fund for Water Enterprise Use in the event the drought persists and the city is ultimately forced to use less water, which leads to less revenue. This happened in two thousand fourteen during the last big drought. Water rates would need to be increased to cover fixed costs of operation and to meet the bond covenants. If the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand is refunded, this means when the increase is calculated, the enterprise will not have the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and all customers will make up the lost drought charge and their standard rates, including the impact of decreased water sales. So, uh, however, crediting back the drought charge could alleviate some special situations staff is managing for customers, primarily single-family, uh, single-family homes, uh, that have requests for adjustments because they feel the drought charge was not applied fairly to their account. So next steps for staff is that we're, we're basically right now in planning for extremely limited water supply for next year, addressing the question of how the city can force that to happen if absolutely mandated to do so. In this scenario, Kalinga will not be alone, but in the same position with all water suppliers, depending on surface water for sources such as Shasta Lake. Between now and the early months of two thousand twenty-two, staff's update will continue to update the council on communication with USBR, as well as begin discussions on how to respond to the potential worst twenty-two, twenty-three water year where water allocations may fall farther below that we are currently at in this current year. Um, with that, uh, sorry for the lengthy overview, but I just wanted to give kind of a big picture perspective on kind of where we started this water year and where we're headed, um, potentially coming into next water year.
Cool, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I guess my response is, um, who else has the water contracts? And Dan could probably answer this. Who else has water contracts around here that are federal like we do?
Avonall is solely dependent on USP water, just like Kalinga.
Do you represent Avonall too? Or are you a?
Actually, I'm doing a rate study for them now, right?
Did they raise rates?
That's what I'm doing. But there wasn't a drought charge put in place for this.
So Avonall didn't get a drought charge, is what I'm asking?
No, they did not.
They didn't? But we have the same contracts, and they got their water cut just like we did, is that right?
That's correct.
But how come they didn't have to do a drought charge? How come you didn't go with, to them and tell them they needed to do it right away like we did?
Well, I just started there. I, I just started serving them.
Okay, so they in fact got their water increased by the USBR?
I don't know that.
Okay, well, they did. The answer is yes, they did. Without having a drought charge like we did. So we, we punished our citizens, while Avonall didn't punish, punish their citizens. And they still got water, additional water, like we got additional water. So why did we take that direction? Why are we punishing our citizens? Our fight is not with the citizens. Our fight needs to start being with the state and our stupid representatives who represent us and do nothing for this water thing. When are we going to start fighting them instead of fighting between us and our citizens? Enough is enough. Time to go after them instead of our citizens. I've had enough of this. And further, how much did our water cost, Sean? Uh, for a thousand, I believe we charged per thousand gallons, right?
Per thousand gallons, yeah.
How much was our, how much did we charge? How much was our water cost in July, August, and September per thousand gallons?
Dan, do you have that exact number, what our, our water costs are? Because the billing rate's two thirteen.
Okay, well, I mean, what are we charging our customers per thousand gallons, um, before?
It's in the two dollar range.
Right, so we're not paying more for water, right? We're just charging residents more for water. We're still getting water at the same rate into Kalinga.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're still getting water at the same rate into Kalinga, but we're sitting here charging our citizens more money for the water that we're still getting at the same exact cost.
So far.
It just makes no sense to me. I mean, it was all kind of doom and gloom when we first heard it, and I admit that, uh, I didn't think enough about it before. And I voted for this, and I shouldn't have. What was the water con, oh, we already talked about that. So Avonall seems to be able to get this water stuff done without punishing their citizens. I don't see why we can't do the same thing. And that's one of the main reasons why I think that we need to refund this money. It didn't cost us more to get the water, it cost us exactly the same. It is possible that we will have to charge more in the future. And when that time comes, then we'll have to deal with it. But until then, I'm not willing to keep punishing our citizens.
I understand the conservation and everything, and I think our, our community did as much as it could. I know during the summer, there's a lot of work for a lot of community, um, citizens. But coming in the winter, a lot of them take, you know, their, their time off. And just like Councilman, um, Atkinson said, it's just, it, it's pretty harsh to see other cities getting water and not getting punished, and we're punishing our citizens. And, you know, um, back in, back in the summer, it looked, um, reasonable. It looked something that we could help, but I just, I'm the same way. Like me, I, I killed my whole lawn. I spent twelve hundred dollars just in the backyard and, um, twelve hundred dollars in the front. And, you know, I did my part, but I, like I, like Mr. Atkinson said, I think the fight is up there in Sacramento and, uh, with the community. So I'm, I'm in the same boat.
Okay, I, I, I hear and I see the boat that, that we're in. But we're talking to Sacramento who doesn't listen to us. Number one, be honest, they don't care about the valley. So we're not going to get any water. I don't foresee it because you're going to get it in LA, and you're going to get it up north every time. It's green, it's beautifully green up there and down there. So our fight isn't with the people. I agree, but the reason we did the charges was in case we needed it for the future, is that correct? So we're trying to be, I guess, proactive instead of reactive where we don't have any water, we have no money. So, and if we had not have charged the citizens, okay, that would have been fine. Then we would have all suffered together at the same time. As opposed to some losing their yard, their, their lawns and some having tremendous bills. So now we're at the point, we can't, in my opinion, you can't go back and give out what was received in. Because the ones that lost their yards can't go back and make that yard green again. And at the end of the day, everybody's going to have to pay that. So whatever she paid for using too much water, and I didn't because I didn't now, she's going to get her money back, so I'm going to end up paying for her water when it comes to, everybody's going to be flat at the same rate. So it's like you're, I did my part, or I didn't do mine, but he did his. But at the end of the day, he's going to be in the same boat with me. So you, it's hard to justify that now to say, let's flatline it, give them their money back, and let's move on. Or I would say even better, you could move on from here right now. So when you didn't use that water, you were rewarded by not getting that payment. But when you did use that water, you were rewarded by paying the extra. Because many of us can afford the bill and keep our grass green, definitely. But I chose to go Sahara Desert style because I didn't want to be that one that's taking water from somebody else. So I'm going to fight it, let it go brown, I could care less, whatever. And that was the fight within. So the ones that did, great, the ones that didn't, you have to pay that fee so to get it back. It's kind of slapping the ones in the face that did. I think that, that's, that's a hard pill to have to chuck down when down the line, everybody's going to play that flat. So I'm going to be paying for somebody else's thing. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Jones. What if you had a process through which people could apply for a partial refund or a full refund for families that have a greater number of people in them? Like create a rubric, a standard, so people could say, hey, I've got eight people in my family, and yeah, we used more. Is there a way that you could do something like that so it's not just across the board? It might be a little more time consuming, but maybe that way it could be more equitable. Because I mean, two people living in a house like myself, I, I could easily cut water. But I know people who have eight, and there is no way they could do that, so just a thought.
I don't know, and not to you, you got, come on up, young lady.
Vanessa Huttenlocker, District One. See, I have an issue with some of the water drought charges, not just because of myself and my family, but I have an elderly neighbor that lives right next door to me, who got a six hundred dollar bill. She lives by herself, and that's very unaffordable. She comes to me and she's like, hey, Vanessa, can you come check out my bill? I don't understand this bill. She doesn't have social media. She doesn't, you know, get emails. She doesn't have a cellphone or any of that, you know? So I don't know, but she comes to me and she's like, I don't understand this. I get a six hundred dollar bill, and I have seventy-five thousand gallons that I used, and I live by myself. Now, how does this make any sense, Vanessa? And I'm like, you know what, I will find out for you because I have access to these resources, and I will find out for you. And, you know, I'm that person that's proactive and talking to the right people. And they told me, hey, you know, this is what's going on, and if you would like, we can come over and check it out. And, you know, um, one of the Public Works guys was happy to come over and check it out. And they did indeed find that there was like a possible mistake at the meter side, um, on the city side. But yet my neighbor still got charged. No one ever took care of her bill, nothing. She was being honest and, you know, not watering more than she should. She, you know, just anything. But that's just one scenario. What happened, what if that is many other scenarios? Many other people out there that are elderly, living by themselves, or two people, you know, that hardly use anything, you know? They know how to conserve, they've been there, done that in the past, you know? Early nineteen hundreds or whatever they did back then. You know, they know how to do it. But why are they getting charged when they didn't do anything? Because there's a leak or something, and that's not under their control? You know, it might be on the city's side, it might not, but what do they do? You know, and then there's people like me, you know, who have, you know, multiple family, you know? And when I have to tell my kids they can't take a shower every day, you know, we can't do our laundry every day, you know? That sucks. It stinks, especially when you got teenagers and you got to smell their armpits every day, like, ugh, come on, go put your deodorant on. Go rinse that off, you know? It sucks, you know? And we did find we had a leak, and that was what was an issue for us. So it wasn't that we're having a high bill. My, you know, gracious husband who works, you know, doubles a lot because he works, you know, at the state. He checked for, you know, everywhere. We're like, where's this leak? We can't find it anywhere. We saw there was a leak at the city side. But then we went and found our leak, and he fixed it. And now you don't see the leak on the city side. Somehow, I guess it works out that way, you know? If there's a leak, you know, on your side, it will sometimes show up on the city side, whatever. But he found it, and hopefully we'll start seeing a more gracious bill now. But, um, but still not the point, you know? Some of us really did try. You know, some of us killed some of our plants, which I'm not the best at watering things. By all means, I will kill plants, not even on purpose. The succulent a few months ago. But anyways, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Come on in.
Okay, now Scott Netherton, four twenty-four College Avenue. I don't know if this is something that can be done, and I understand the people that did. My grass, well, my dirt was just like yours. Is there a way with that two hundred and seventy-six thousand? It can be divided evenly because those who did save, and I'm not saying give refunds. Spread it out, give fifteen percent off everybody's bill. So the people that did pay because of the extra rate, they see a discount on their bill. Do away with it going forward? Don't do the extra, because it'd be like, I'm going to say Union Seventy-Six. Since we don't have that, I don't want to throw Chevron faster. They're getting gas for two bucks a gallon, and suddenly they say, well, they're They're getting gas for two bucks a gallon, and suddenly they say, well, there could be a shortage, we better start charging six bucks a gallon. Is that fair to our residents? That's kinda what we did. We were worried about what could happen, so we're punishing everybody if they didn't conserve. You don't wanna drive, you wanna walk, get my little golf cart, drive around town? You save gas. I don't have to pay that, but some people can't. Is, is that something that is even feasible, not doing, not giving the people that paid the fine, basically a fine, their money back? But because the people that did save, get, save on their water, they suffered just as much that paid the money. It may be an ugly yard versus an extra little money on their bill. But take that two seventy-six, if there's nine hundred residents paying with the city bill, divide that up over three months. If it comes out to be ten and figured out, I'm not saying the city should lose any money, so you're not giving that back. You go back, if my bill's a hundred and ten bucks a month, I get fifteen percent off this month. Everybody gets fifteen percent off, and that two seventy-six kinda is absorbed into that. Is that something that's even possible? I mean, that way, those who paid the extra get some back, and those that, you know, suffered and lost their lawns and what have you, don't feel like they're being slighted either. I just, just a thought.
When is, when is the bill coming out for the last drought charge? Has that already happened?
Yes, it's already come out.
Was that the one that just came out like a couple days ago?
Uh, probably, yeah. It'd be for the, for September billing.
It just seems like a terrible time with Thanksgiving coming up, we're charging these people outrageous amount of money, then they got Christmas coming up after that. This is a terrible time to be doing it, in my opinion. And we have five million dollars in reserves. We should be using that to help some of our residents out right now. We gave, you know, one point or about one million dollars to employees on bonuses. And now we're saying we can't give anything to the citizens. So I said my piece. Y'all know.
Is there, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Roger Tiffin. I came here tonight a little bit not liking the idea of giving a refund, but after hearing everything, I think people got caught by surprise. So to give the refund and let everybody regroup, I wouldn't be opposed to. But I have a concern. In the future, if our water quantity gets cut, and I've driven through my whole neighborhood, and I cut my water in half, flat cut in half. We had some things we were thinking about taking out anyway, so. But how are you gonna deal with that with a person down the street that's watering five nights a week? And his lawn is so thick, my lawnmower wouldn't go through it. And I watch it run down the gutter for four hours and go in the storm drain. So I, I think that needs to be looked at in the future. Uh, I hate to see people get hurt right now, and so if you gotta waive the whole thing and give it back, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I think you're gonna have to bite people who are just gonna absolutely totally waste water. I don't wanna do without when I'm doing, using a half or a third, and I use fifteen and somebody else uses seventy and doesn't care. I think they, you're gonna have to figure that out.
I think it'd be a good idea regardless of how this vote goes, if we could set aside time for our code enforcer to work at night and start ticketing people. I think that would be a much better deterrent than what we had here. I don't know if that's allowed under his con, or whatever it is.
It is. Um, the only thing is that it would only be four waters that's running down the street into the storm drain. Um, we don't have set watering days right now. Um, we don't have a number of days per week that you can water. It's just based on your consumption. And so the only thing that he would really be able to take action on is water running down the street because of the excess water.
Right. But if he was driving and the odd day wasn't watering on, or was watering on a Thursday when there weren't supposed to be?
If we had assigned watering days, yes. We don't currently have that.
But that went till February.
Not currently.
When did it end? Just recently?
Hmm, I think, um, at the beginning of the summer, maybe. Sean, do you recall?
The water emergency just till February.
Well, we, we did declare the stage two, which is, uh, two days a week watering. Um, but when we instituted the drought charges, there was discussion among the council and, uh, that to achieve the, the, to achieve the reduction of the thirty percent was to allow the flexibility of the customer to kind of be in the driver's seat in terms of how they're going to conserve the water. Whether that means watering a little bit every day, a little bit less than they did, maybe three days a week. But, um, my assumption would be is that now with the drought charge kind of over, based on the end of that resolution, that we're basically kinda back to that two days a week watering, essentially. Um, I think now with a little bit of rain we got and with it cooling down, we're, we're at the point now where, you know, one day, if not no days, is probably gonna be sufficient um, for outdoor watering through the winter. Um, but that may be something that the council's gonna have to act on. I know there's an item on the agenda regarding one day a week watering. I don't think we missed it yet. Um, but just to maybe reiterate that, um, but as of right now, we would be back at stage two.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with the refunds. And that's it. I mean, we got an item coming up next that we can discuss more.
So to be clear, this requires, um, they were enacted, it was enacted by a resolution. So we have to, really the direction is to bring you back a resolution with your direction, uh, whatever you're gonna decide.
Okay, so bring it back.
What you said.
I'll second it.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye. Okay, item number three. Discussion, direction, and potential action regarding the reducing outside watering to one day per week. Ms. Trejo.
Thank you. This was another item that was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson, so I'll turn it over to him.
So again, this ties into what we just talked about. We are gonna probably run out of water, sounds like in December-ish. And if we're, if it's that dire, um, we should probably go down to one day a week, and plus it's winter. Hopefully we'll be getting some rain. Hopefully. But I think one day a week is good for what's going on. Hand watering, I guess, would still be allowed. So sprinklers would not be allowed, but hand watering would be. That's I don't have an answer to this. This is just something that I came up with. I don't have an, I wish I had the answer to all this, but I don't. So, something I came up with.
And again, we just need, um, to know that that's the direction of the council so we can bring back a resolution.
Yes.
Yes. We should probably, um, stack it evens on a certain day and odds on a certain day so that we have water flow through the pipes.
Can I ask some clarifying questions too? Um, when, when we talk about one day a week watering for outdoor irrigation, is there anything else specific we wanna, we want to address other than just outside irrigation? Um, hand watering obviously was shut off nozzle because our, our ordinance, I think, goes from two days to no days. Um, basically, which is like our stage three, like catastrophic, where we have like an earthquake or a major water leak where basically people aren't supposed to be using water other than for public health and safety. So this resolution would kinda fall in between stage two and stage three, uh, conservation efforts. Um, do we wanna stick with similar measures that are in stage two? Um, into like this kinda, in this resolution the council's considering?
Well, I mean, so like stage two point five?
Kind, kind, kind of. More else, cause like, there's like, you know, for out, like washing cars and doing other things that, like washing down sidewalks and those types of things, we wanna make sure those are in effect. So unless we just say that stage two remains in effect, but only on this one day watering, and then we identify that schedule in the resolution, so then everything in stage two remains in effect, and then we can just basically say, but in stage, this resolution's gonna identify it's only one day a week, not two.
I mean, if we're, if we're scheduled to run out of water in December, run, run out of our allotment, maybe it is good to go to stage three. Sean, it would've been a lot better if you just stayed quiet.
Sorry. Well, I mean, staff's planning on coming back to the council in December to give you another update. We're gonna be another month out, so we're gonna have a better idea of where we're at. Um, cause we're, we're continuing to just follow up with USBR and try to see what's happening. So we can get ahead of this because as we moved into this, this water year, you know, as we, we knew, we didn't really get into major, you know, discussion until almost June. I mean, we were having conversations about hopefully being able to allocate additional water to Harris Ranch and to be able to do other things with excess water. And now we went, we turned so quickly to this, you know, drought emergency where we were, it was just basically based on our continued conversations with the bureau. But we know how bad it was this year. It's only gonna get worse next year if we don't see rain and a cold winter. So we wanna get ahead of it early, but I think that might be the first step is to go to the one day a week watering. We can maybe use the enforcement mechanism of code enforcement to ensure that that's being adhered to. If we get a lot of rain, then maybe we need to set a standard where, you know, maybe we go to no watering outdoors. Once we get enough rain and it's cold enough in the heart of December and January, you may, you may not need to. Most people turn their sprinklers off in the wintertime.
All right. So how about this? We, can we bring them both back, and then at that time, we can decide which one we wanna go with? Depending on how your conversations go with USBR and how winter plays out between now and then?
Yeah, we can bring some options.
With one or the other or none of them, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Um, because yeah, I, this time when it was raining, I seen a lot of apartments with the sprinklers on and, you know, I think it'll be a pretty good idea to, to, to kinda do that and kinda let it out there, not to, you know, to conserve water while all is raining. That'll be, so.
So we're good? Got it? All right. Item number four. Natural gas rate study and discussion of proposed rate increase. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and council. We can take off our water hats now and put on our natural gas hats. Natural gas is what first brought me to Colinga twenty years ago. And it's where my strongest competency is, based on my professional experience prior to Colinga before I started my own company. So the Colinga gas system is near and dear to me. The Colinga's gas system is a huge asset to the community. I thought it was neat that they picked it up in, in the video, appropriately so. I've really come to love this place. I've explored a lot, and while we're still on the slide, for the first time yesterday, I hiked up to the sea. At, right at sunset. It was just beautiful. You can see it in the slide there. So to talk about natural gas, um, as I mentioned, the gas system is a huge benefit to the city. On the next slide. The gas system has no debt whatsoever. It has no debt. There's no loans, bonds, or anything outstanding associated with the gas system. As I'll show you in detail toward the end of my presentation, gas rates in Colinga are substantially lower than PG&E, even with an increase, any of the options, substantially lower. Because of gas system accidents around the country, there is increasing focus on gas system safety. And your Public Works Department has done a great job keeping up with that. Especially Larry Miller, who's, does everything, is, is especially skilled in that area. And the city is in compliance with the federal requirements for safe operation. And then finally, the best thing is that you city council are in charge of your gas system, not the California Public Utilities Commission. And so in this room right here, we can make decisions tonight. You can make decisions, decisions tonight, if you please. So the gas system is, is a huge benefit. Moving on. Yes, it's a natural gas rate increase, but it's really a reset. And I know a lot of people have heard about this already. In two thousand nine and again in two thousand eleven, we reduced rates and reduced them substantially. In two thousand nine, seventeen percent. In two thousand eleven, twenty-five percent. And I, I designed those decreases at that time. And the intent was to use some of the surplus fund balance to get down to about a million dollars over a few years. But it's taken ten years to utilize fund balance, and I'll show, and show you an illustration of that in a moment. It's taken ten years to get down to that million dollar level. And the reason is because there haven't been a lot of expenses with the gas system, and wholesale gas costs primarily have stayed very low over, over, over the past many years. So we purposely set rates lower to utilize fund balance back in two thousand nine and again in two thousand eleven. So the next slide shows the bar chart. And you can see, I'm showing fund balances. This is cash available. And you can see how it's hovered above two, two million dollars there for several years. It dipped down in two thousand fifteen. It bumped back upward, potentially due to a refund from PG&E, about two hundred thousand dollars, which was nice. And you can see that it's been easing downward. We knew this was coming. And the surprise, and, and, you know, I have to agree with what Nathan Vossberg was saying, why so fast? And I'm gonna talk about that. It's because of events that have happened on, in, with gas supply this summer. So what you're seeing in the slide, at the risk of getting ahead of myself, is that if there's no rate reset or increase for this winter, in this fiscal year, we will burn through a million dollars of fund balance because wholesale gas costs are so much higher this winter. But without getting ahead of myself, let's go to the next one. It would have finally been time anyway. The surprise, because of the events this summer, is the magnitude of the reset or the increase that's needed. The system has not had any major maintenance for a long time. It hasn't needed it. The steel part of the system around the older part of town is protected with a cathodic protection system. There are these electric devices that impose current on the pipe so they don't deteriorate. And, and those systems are going to need some attention in the next few years, not tomorrow, but it's gonna be expensive. So in the, in the revenue requirement that I've set up, I've allocated a hundred thousand dollars each year to, to pay for that, which probably isn't quite enough. But we need something, and we need something somewhat meaningful to represent that cost when it shows up. And as I've already said, wholesale gas prices have skyrocketed over the next several months. Let's look at events in the gas market. There's been a backlash effect. COVID caused low demand and low prices. As a result, producers curtailed production and stopped drilling. And then on the backside of that, or really during it, we had the Great Texas Freeze, which everyone heard about in the news, which drove gas prices above a hundred dollars in MIBTO in some situations. The city of Colinga cannot, could not withstand that. It, you know, as a city, you wouldn't go bankrupt. It would, it would create a very, very serious problem. But the market, as a result of that Great Texas Freeze, observed how elastic prices are. Demand went up, prices went way up. And so marketers and suppliers and, and consumers are still aware like, oh gosh, that could happen again. And then finally, and I have a picture of it in the next slide, in August, a thirty-inch pipeline exploded near Coolidge, Arizona. That is a picture of it. This was a San Bruno-like event. The reason it wasn't in the national news is because it wasn't in San Bruno. It was out in an agricultural area. But when this happened, two people were killed in a home that's where those crossroads are from the heat, the explosion, I don't know. But it was when this event happened that gas cost started to skyrocket, and you see it in the next slide. This, I've, by the way, I've roughly been following my rate report. This slide is not in the rate report. The numbers are in the report. So that pipeline explosion happened in August, and you can see where costs start to go up was right following the pipeline accident. And so the solid line represents the city's actual cost, and you can see how low they have been. That trend continues backward in time, low prices. You can see the peak this winter. And then you can see, this is very typical of what happens with the psychology of how a commodity is traded. The crisis passes, and the futures costs for the commodity are dropping, 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 back to some level of normalcy going forward. But we're facing right now, in fact, what we're almost in the midst- What we're facing right now, in fact, what we're almost in the midst of, at the beginning of, are this winter's cost. The gas costs I use in the rate study for November, I modeled it at 602. I already know the actuals. It's closer to $7. And that $7 for wholesale gas costs, you could compare that to maybe $3 or $3.50 last year. So it's about twice as much. The concern is that this, these future costs, as we go through this winter in particular, don't do the Texas thing if something happens. If we have a warm winter, generally it won't be a problem. But if we have cold events, it will be a problem. One of my roles for the city, because of my competency in this area, is gas purchasing. And I'm taking steps to purchase your gas through this winter such that you are not exposed to day gas volatility. I don't need to spend a lot of time talking about that. The main concern is that what we're looking at here doesn't get worse. So moving on. To talk a little bit about how I model revenue requirements. I'm very careful about this, whether it's water or gas or sewer. The first step is to look at the city's audited numbers to make sure that the modeling I'm doing aligns with audited numbers looking backwards. Then look at current year-to-date numbers, which in this case Jasmine provides from your accounting system. I already mentioned the wholesale gas forecast looking forward. The prices looking backward are actuals. With regard to city costs for employees and parts and supplies, labor costs are escalated at 5%. The other items are at 3% looking, going forward. And the rate study attachments three through six show the different scenarios for the different revenue increases that I'm suggesting here. The scenarios I show you are 35%, 40%, and 45%. The one I'm recommending is 45%. So moving on, this is a good illustration, this bar chart. This is the one in the rate study. As a result of a citizen comment, let's just go to the next one, which is the same chart. And on this chart, I have separated out the PG&E cost. So these are the costs to operate the system, starting in fiscal 18. The bottom part are all the fixed costs, employees, parts, supplies. The middle hatched area is cost for PG&E transportation to get the wholesale gas that we buy to Colinga. And then the top part, which is supposed to be blue, is for wholesale cost. The dash line that you see horizontally is the average gas rate connected. So you can see that over the past four years, the gas rate has roughly been close to the cost each year. And that continues backward, just like I was mentioning before. If that gas rate is not increased going forward, you can see how much we will be short as far as cost per unit collected. This bar chart also shows just gradual inflationary costs for operations and maintenance across the bottom. You see that gradually going upward. And in my projections, I'm using that inflationary component that I mentioned, 3% to 5%. It shows PG&E costs also increasing. Gas costs are decreasing over time. In this representation, it looks flat because the other costs are coming up underneath. Okay. So moving on. The next chart shows again the consequence of no increase. So you can see up through fiscal '21, those are actual numbers. Fiscal '22 shows the million-dollar drop without any increase at all. And if there's no increase, we go into the negative in fiscal '23. I'm showing you this again because in the next slide, I'm showing just the tail end of what we just looked at under the different increase scenarios. So you can see with the 35% increase, the fund balance will drop over the next four years. With the 40% increase in the middle, it doesn't drop as much. And with the 45% increase, the fund balance will be held roughly constant, close to that million-dollar level. Next. So these are the existing and the proposed rates based on the 45% level. The rate structure is held the same. The rates are set such that a family's summer baseline and winter baseline usage for a typical home with typical heat doesn't get into the more expensive gas. So right now, it's 50 cents a therm for the baseline and then 75 cents for single-family for excess. Commercial customers all pay the same rate. I'm going to spend some time now doing, showing comparison for Colinga and then compared to PG&E. So the first thing I'm showing is what a typical single-family profile looks like. Most of the gas is used in the winter, about 70% because it's all heating. Summer gas is clothes washing and water heating and, I mean, and cooking. Those are the three choices. So this is the profile, 360 thermes per year for a typical customer. So the comparison I've done is based on the 360 thermes per year. If I lived in Huron and I were getting PG&E gas and I used the same quantity of gas, I would pay $604 over the last 12 months. I looked at actual rates. For Colinga, it's more than 50% less currently at $268. And then you can see the amounts for each of the increases. 362, 375, 388, which is still over 30% less than PG&E. I want you to know, as most people know, I've been following the news. This gas crisis, it's not just Colinga, it's not just California. It's the Western U.S. at a minimum. And I looked today at what PG&E's, like my PG&E gas cost is for this month, November. It's $2 a therm. Now, the increase amount for Colinga for baseline is 73 cents. So just in November alone, this month, I will be paying, I mean, I was kind of shocked when I saw this, at home, I will be paying $2 a therm. And I'm sharing that with you for perspective because the 45% increase rate is 73 cents. It's so much less, whether you're me at home or you enjoying the benefit of your gas system. So now going to, one thing that's so useful to see, the slide that shows the stack-up of all the utility components. Colinga is very unique in that you have so many utility services that you provide to your customer. The only thing you don't have is electricity. And I guess cable service, I don't know if you call that. People don't do cable anymore, you know, it's. But the only thing primarily that you don't have is electricity. So this shows the stack-up of all the current rates, back to November of 19. And it's showing how the gas increase shows in the midst of all your other rates. So that median customer that was paying 22, 33 per year will start paying, per month, will start paying 32, 33. So for a median customer, the increase is $10 per month average. More in the winter, less in the summer, but it's $10 per month.
Just real quick, what is our current rate per therm?
It's back on the rate charts, 50 cents for. So it's going from 50 cents to 73 cents with the 45% increase.
Sorry. And you say the average is going to be about $10 a month, I would say. Any idea what it would be during the winter months, the average? I know you averaged it out through the entire year, but I'm trying to figure out what it's going to be right now if we pass this and what they're looking at in the next couple of months.
15 to 20.
15 to 20?
I didn't do my opening speech about how enterprise funds are businesses that operate within the city. But it's always good to touch on that again. It's a business, whether it's sewer or water or natural gas or even the refuse. So the responsibility in operating this thing is to set rates to cover costs. The alternative, when there's a deficit, is that the money comes out of the general fund, which is not fair to all the needs, you know, in the general fund. Yes, this snuck up on me slash us because of the natural gas events that happened this summer. It would have been, ideally, we would have done it sooner. But nonetheless, we benefited as an enterprise fund over the past decade on low gas cost in a huge way. One thing to consider going forward, going to next steps, is when the market settles down, it might be a decision that you support as a city council to buy futures, buy fixed-cost gas into the future. It's a little bit of a, it's a gamble, one way or the other. You could buy fixed-price gas and then the market could drop, right? We haven't done that. We haven't needed to do that because there was a reserve fund there of money we were trying to burn up. But what happened here is we got down close to the bottom and then, oh, you know, here comes high wholesale prices. So to the extent, city council, you choose, you could choose a lower option. The lower the option, the more likely it is we're back here in the springtime after winter. I'll tell you, in all fairness and to be reasonable, with natural gas, we don't have to go through the 218 process. It is exempt by law from the requirements of Prop 218. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do a good job communicating to our residents, but it is easier procedurally to adjust rates. But I don't want to take emphasis away from the fact that, in this case, no actions means we are going to burn through $1 million in the next five months. And on that positive note.
Under this, when do you propose that this takes effect?
Right. And I've been specific in the resolution that's written. The increase would become effective in the billing cycle that starts next week. So it would be effective for the November-December billing cycle. And customers would see their first bills with a higher gas rates at the end of December.
At the, at the end of December is when they will get their.
The first bill.
First bill.
Because of the delay.
Can I say something real quick while we're on that topic? We have the natural gas assistance, that program that Mercedes handles. Those applications usually become available in December for the November bill. So anyone who meets those income requirements for that program can apply for gas assistance.
And is that for like, I heard a couple of people that email me, renters or homeowners?
It is based on whoever the bill is in their name. They're the ones that submit the application and based on income. And the program runs from November to March where gas consumption is higher. And if you are on a fixed income, meet those income thresholds, then you can apply and the last year, two years. We haven't had a lot of people apply for the gas assistance program. We, the finance department does put a blurb in there. People that have applied in the past, they can call and ask for an application. We mail it out to them. They can bring in their information. We make a copy of it. If they're missing any documents, we give them a call back. So we do push it. And then I have also supplied applications in the past to the Neighborhood Resource Center who do assist people filling those out.
So it's open based on their income?
Based on their income and it runs from November to March.
Okay, sounds good.
So I was trying to talk before you. I agree that we probably need to raise rates. I would, my only thing is I don't want to do it in December. I want to do it in January because of Christmas. So that's, I would, my request would be to hold off until January. I think we can absorb it. If not, we can absorb it through our $5 million that we have in reserves.
So would that be for the December usage, that they would receive that bill in January?
When do the bills come out? At the end of the month?
They're processed at the end of the month. Residents generally receive them right at the beginning of the month.
They won't be due until?
The 25th, yeah. So bills going out at the end of December will be due January 25th.
Okay, how about that?
Yeah, that's equal to December and then they pay January. That works. I think, I'll make a motion.
There's a resolution attached to this, so we got to look at the language real quick.
Then I won't bring it back for a refund.
I'm sorry. So Mark, what was that? I missed what was said.
There's a resolution attached. So we need to give them the correct language to make the motion to approve the resolution, but with the following language change.
The language change was what?
We don't know. That's what we're looking up.
Basically, we want to start it in, effective in December.
Well, just to clarify, if, and I'm not disagreeing with you, just, I just want to make sure we're clear. If it's left as is, the bills will go January 1st and then be due toward the end of January. So if you postpone it a month, it'll be end of February. Is that how you understood it?
No, the way I understood it through our conversation we just had is that they would get, the rates would go up pretty much.
Next week.
Next week. And they would get the bill in December. Is that right? I don't want to do that to the people of Colinga during Christmas. I want to wait one month and make sure that they get their bills in January.
So if it's, let me just say this.
So that, that would be the same. So how it's written right now is that it'll be effective with the reading cycle in November 2021 and it ends in December 21, 2021. The new rates will be applied to the billing statements issued at the end of December 2021, which means that's when they will receive them at the beginning, roughly the beginning of January, and they won't be due until the 25th of January.
Yes.
Okay.
So the way that it's written is that the new rates will be applied to the billing statements issued at the end of December, which won't be due until January 25th.
Okay, so we can just leave it as.
The resolution can be approved as is.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
So I make a motion for the resolution as it is.
I'll second.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
And I also vote aye.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Whoa. Announcements. City manager's announcement.
Thank you. I do have a few. I just want to remind everyone that we have the Mid Valley Disposal Cleanup Event taking place on November 13th from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, we have the Lisa Project here in the council chambers from October 14th through the 20th, which was an exhibit on child abuse. And so I hope that the community was able to enjoy that. And I want to publicly thank Pleasant Valley State Prison, who funded that exhibit to be here in the city. Also, we have the City of Colinga Christmas Gift Program underway right now. So we have 189 children registered this year. 189 children registered this year. We are in need of additional Christmas wrapping paper or gift bags. If you have any that you're cleaning out your closet, and you find some, you can drop it off here at City Hall.
City councilman announcements.
Next Friday, I will be hosting Chris Mathis here. Chris Mathis is running for Congress against David Valadeo. I also invited Valadeo. I talked to his people today. We're working out the exact dates when he will be here, and Nicole Parra, who's running against him. So next Friday, 6 o'clock here in Council Chambers, Town Hall-style meeting with Chris Mathis.
Cool.
I just want to recognize just Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department. For our first rainstorm, they were, they were on point. I'm glad that they were prepared. Police Department, you know, just patrolling our streets, making it safer. I'm glad there's a new hired. Fire Department, can't thank you enough. All responded for the two fires already. And I'm glad we had the bodies for that. And it's, you know, I'm glad they were there. Thank you.
All right. And the mayor's announcements. The only announcement we have for the mayor is if you could, when you lay your head on your pillow, say a prayer for Ron Ramsey, hopefully that he's doing well. And any future agenda items? There are none? Closed sessions, real property negotiations. And that's it, right? Huh. That's it? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, thank you.